I'd like to call to order the Aridale County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October the 7th, 2025, our four o'clock pre-agenda meeting. I'd like to ask the manager, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir. No adjustments to the agenda this evening.
No adjustments going down the list. We do not have any special recognitions and awards tonight, but we do have an appointment before the board at the six o'clock hour. It'll be a presentation from Parks and Recreation to recognize the Youth Athletic Scholarships Program, and we do not have a public hearing tonight. Brings us down to our administrative matters, and if you want to go and kick those off, please, ma'am.
Absolutely. Thank you. The first item is a request from Aridale Statesville Schools for approval of, excuse me, of two proposed sewer easements on county-owned school properties. And they're in the packet for you. The original request was for us to approve these two easements, and through the due diligence, and you'll see in the manager's recommendation, one of the properties, which is the Brawley School, the deed or the debt for that facility has been satisfied. So instead of approving the easement, our attorney has been working with their attorney to deed that property back over to them and let them take care of approving the easement. But the one that we actually do need to approve an easement for is Lake Norman High School, and then approve the deed transfer for the Brawley School. And I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Valdez to give you some more information on it.
You've pretty much covered it.
Oh, okay.
But I will tell you, I provided you a revised deed at the dais, and the language that's in yellow was corrected after Mr. Shatley and I discussed the restriction that we had on the property. And what you all have previously done was the language that was in the deed that's in the agenda packet, with the intent being that the property, if the school board were inclined to sell it, and the statutes require that they offer it to you first before they can sell it. And we had previously clarified that language a little bit. Your concern has always been paying for the property twice if they came back to you with it. So that language remains the second sense there at no cost to the grantor. But he did have concerns and wanted addressed as far as what the North Carolina Constitution says, and the consideration that schools have to receive for public, for public school, public education purposes. And so that language has been added, and I am fine with this language. We may want to discuss it further going forward, but this is one school site, and we'll look at the others to see which ones are also available to go ahead and transfer back where the debt has been paid. I would note, too, just on the easement agreement that you have, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it for you. This is, this is an agreement to provide an easement should Madam E purchase the property. So there's a two-step process that's included in this. There's an initial $5,000 payment that is for the purposes of considering the easement, and then an additional $20,000 when the easement is actually granted. And this is conditional upon Madam E actually closing on the piece of property and needing that sewer easement. Those funds you've typically, on both of these, those funds have typically then gone into the capital account for the school system. And I am waiting for confirmation from the lender. The lender has approved the Lake Norman, the Madam E agreement with Lake Norman, and in the past, they have not required that payment to then go to them to pay down the debt. And I'm just waiting for written confirmation that that's the case here as well. But it would come to the county and then be reserved for future capital projects for Aridale Statesville Schools.
What's the pro and con of us putting it back in their name? I'm just saying, insurance purposes?
I'm sorry?
Like if the debt, once the debt's paid, what's the, why are we, is it for insurance purposes, we're putting it back in their name?
Yes.
Okay.
And then it belongs to them. I mean, typically what happens, the process has always been when you are borrowing and using it as collateral, that it has to be in our name because we're the borrowing entity. And then, once that's completed and paid for, then it's transferred back. And that's, that's what you've been, in my tenure, that's what.
We've told them, and our expectation is, you know, when we sell something, that that money goes back into capital.
Correct.
And I just wanted to make sure that whether or not we need to get the current board in agreement to that, or is that something we need to shore up somehow that it's required to go back into capital, so they couldn't take that money and put it in their general fund somewhere?
I believe that they're required, between the North Carolina Constitution and statutorily, that that money be used for capital purposes. The issue is more which capital project is it used on, and that would be a conversation that you could have with the board to confirm.
Okay, okay.
And, and part of Dean Shatley's concern was that it, that it is, any money that comes back or any consideration for it is used for public education purposes and the capital funding aspect.
I know some of their, I know some of them were concerned that there was some interest, at least in the past, to take that money and use it whatever they wanted to use it for. And we've always said it needs to roll back into capital. I just wanted to make sure we emphasize that if we don't want the property ourselves, that if they, when they liquidate it, it does have to go back into capital.
I think that's a fair conversation to have, either at the time that it's brought to you, or as some sort of overall agreement for how these are handled going forward. Because this is, this is one school, but there are others that Caroline is helping me go through the list to determine which ones also are no longer needed for collateral, so that we can get those off of our books and back to them.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the Fire Tax Oversight Committee for approval of Budget Amendment Number Eight, to use funds from the countywide Fire Tax Service District, which is the old district, to assist South Aridale Fire Rescue with apparatus repairs. Mr. Kent Green is here to make this presentation to the board.
Thank you, Manager Milton. Commissioners, most of you are aware, over the past couple of years, since we moved away from the countywide service district to the all-county, several departments have come before the fire tax oversight and requested assistance with unexpected apparatus repairs. This is a similar request from South Aridale for the amount of $29,005. I will note, last November, December, South Aridale wrecked one of their frontline trucks, so this is a reserve truck, as well as a truck that is on loan from Shepherds that we acquired through the transition from Wayside. So they are both older apparatus.
Any questions?
One question, Kent. Remind me, because I've forgotten, the departments, when they're selling apparatuses themselves, are they, I know the ones we bought, are we making sure that we roll that money back into our apparatus fund? Because some of the departments, you know, they donated some A truck or so to Western North Carolina after the floods, but do they need to check with us for that, or did they? I don't remember.
By contract, anything purchased after January 1st of 2002 would have the county's input as to whether or not to transfer that asset somewhere else.
Somebody asked me, I couldn't remember.
And if nobody wants it, then they are allowed to sell it, and the money is supposed to come back into the Apparatus Replacement Fund.
So when that department sold, I know they donated that, I think, but if they sell it, are we making sure for the next year's budget that we're accounting for that extra capital being in their budget, or is it coming in our budget?
I believe that particular apparatus was purchased before the 2002.
Was it? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Somebody asked me, I just didn't remember. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kent? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Ms. Milton, I'm sorry, could I go back to number one and just ask that it be clarified that the chair is authorized to sign both of those documents? I don't think it was included.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm making a note.
Are you good?
Do we need to reconsent to that, or no?
I mean, if you all agree that that's part of the consent, and then when the consent agenda is adopted at the six o'clock hour.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. Then I'll update that when I report that back out. The next item is a request from the Information Technology Services Department for the approval of a new data circuit and for authorization for the county manager to sign this agreement. And Mr. Joey Holsalder is here to make this presentation to the board.
Afternoon.
Afternoon.
So what we're requesting here is just a three-year contract for the new data circuit at the Winston Avenue property, saving roughly about $125 a month by going three years.
Any kind of question for Joey? Everybody good, consent?
Consent.
And Joey also has the next item, and that's a request from the Information Technology Services Department to upgrade the current spectrum circuit for three years and for the authorization of the county manager to sign this agreement.
So we currently have a 20-meg circuit at our Parks and Rec facility, which is, with the addition of teams and new cameras and just the bandwidth that it requires to run, is not adequate. We're at a position now to where if two people in that department try to get on a teams call at the same time, they get kicked out. So we're just looking at a request to take the 20-meg circuit and upgrade it to 100-meg, so that they have the ability to work efficiently there.
Any question, Joey? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The next item is a request from the Ecom Department for the approval of an amendment to the Olin Tower Site Agreement and the authorization of the county manager to sign. And Mr. Scott Niblock is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good evening, Commissioners. This amendment pertains to the existing agreement for the emergency communications tower located in Olin Community. Under the original agreement, Aridale County was granted the right to install, construct, and maintain tower and related equipment to provide a reliable radio coverage for emergency responders. Since then, Ecom has installed a new generator and constructed a new shelter. To support these improvements, we're requesting a minor amendment to the agreement to establish new utility services in Aridale County's name, as the previous power source was insufficient. With the county now managing its own utilities, the annual fee to Harmony Fire Department will no longer be required. This change ensures continued operational reliability and efficiency to the site. Thank you.
Any questions? Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Quick and easy.
That was quick and easy. I'm sorry, can I deviate just a minute and ask this team why they're still here before Nikki and Scott and Daryl get away? Can you let them know where we are and the status of our Viper simulcast with our towers? Can you give just a quick, would the board like to have just a quick update on where we are?
Yep.
With Vipers, why we have them here? This is kind of related.
Have it up ready tomorrow.
Yeah, absolutely. So right now, we're finishing up at Olin. This will let us go ahead and initiate the power needed up there. Motorola is telling us that they're roughly looking at mid-November to the end of November for the original seven sites. The additional eight site at Sharon School will be later on.
And that's the one on the I-40 rest area that was a little late coming online. So we should be good to go sometime in November. We're crossing our fingers, but we're not holding our breath, right?
Yes, ma'am. And we're, we're hoping to hopefully roll out USDD Automated Voice Dispatch at the same time.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was looking for Brianna. There she is. The next item was a request from ICATS to apply for the use of FTA Section 5307 funds to renovate the Winston Avenue Center. And Brianna is here to make this presentation to the board.
Hello. Yeah, basically, we're here today to talk about the funds and how we would like to use them for the new facility. Right now, in total, ICATS has unobligated funds totaling in $4,142,123. And these backdate to FY '21. So in order to use the full capacity of these funds dating back to then, we have five years to get into action and use them. So we're rolling the dice on, you know, kind of implementing them into the new facility, to the full capacity. The top concerns that we have and challenges where we are currently and what we would like to use these funds for at the new facility are going to be for maintenance being number one. We would like to provide three service bays to have onsite maintenance throughout the day. And an advantage to this is that, so with 5307, if you provide onsite maintenance, you can actually put those funds toward your capital, instead of, like, if you were to use someone off-site, like the county garage, which we still will use as well. But it's just an added advantage that we can put funds towards capital as well, because we always receive more from 5307 in capital than we do in operational. So it's just something, a way to kind of balance what you're using there. The second thing that we would like to use these funds for is for training and safety. Currently, we have a meeting every single month, and to date this year, we have had only one meeting that we've been able to hold actually onsite. We're going to the Ag Center, or we've had to use the lab at Goodwill. So just having that space gives us a good place to hold 51 people for those monthly meetings. And then, the rest is really just for overall efficiency operations through day-to-day. The space is larger, providing more bathrooms and, you know, day-to-day operations. Right now, we've got one bathroom, so we kind of have a staggered schedule of when drivers are going to be coming in, so that, because, believe it or not, the bathrooms actually is a thing that you have to kind of play out with. So given the space, you know, the bathrooms are already there, so that's something that provides us overall operation efficiency. And then, the employee wellness. So we are planning to add a small gym to our facility, so that we can work on strength training and just overall well-being of our drivers, given that on a daily basis, they are moving wheelchairs, lifting heavy people, you know, overall, that's just a goal that we have for them. And then, you know, the parking lot is number one, probably on our list, is providing the space that we need to provide all 32 vehicles a good spot. So, yep, we're just here for overall consent to use the funds moving forward with the building.
Are you going to have service people in the days there, or is Garage doing everything, or what?
So we, it is a multi-use, a dual-use facility. So the front portion of the building will be ICATS, and then the back portion, we're going to use for housing or rolling stock, like our emergency management, towers, trailers, things of that nature. There will be another section that we will be using for surplus. And then, if we are able to use some of these funds, then we may have some space and could utilize some of those funds for a bay or two. We may not have enough room for three. But depending upon the availability of the funds, what we can use the funds for. I do want to say that the, this is a list of items for possible uses. It depends upon, the number one party is the lower-level parking lot, which is going to have to be a tiered lot. So that is the highest priority for that parking. And all the different uses that we want to detail out, we may not be able to do, depending upon how expensive some of these items are. But these are items that could be done and that they have on their wish list. But I want to make sure that everybody understands, all of these things, we may not have enough funding to do all of these things, and it may not all be done, but these, these are items that they have identified that they would like to have and like to do with the funding. It's a, it has a match?
It does. So there's a 10% local match that would be covered by ICATS.
Is it 10 or 20?
20.
I, you are right. Yes. Yes, you're right. It is a 20% match.
So there is a match for these. So the, the $4 million that's available, there is a 20% match for that, that will come from the county. And like I said, we'll, we'll be working on where those funds, how we could utilize those funds for the highest and best use. And of course, the parking lot is the number one priority, because we have to get some additional parking for the buses.
Right, right.
We also, and we already have, we're, we've kind of already started that work to look to see how we can get that parking lot in there. And they also have requested to have a, a building or facility there where they, maybe a restroom there at that lot when they come in for the buses, instead of having to come up to the main facility. So all of that has to be designed. There has to be, of course, earthwork and things of that nature done, too. But this is kind of a wishlist, and asking for permission to utilize these funds to do improvements to that facility.
Because we saved a substantial amount of money from what we had budgeted by getting this facility.
Correct. Yes, absolutely.
One of the things we talked about in the past, specifically for ICATS, but other departments, was some type of a wash bay. Is there any opportunity?
What we are doing with ICATS is they're using the wash bay at the Public Safety Center that the ambulances are using. So am I correct in that? I'm looking. Okay, so that facility is available for them to use. We have, we already have a facility. It's available, and where ICATS can use that wash bay, they're at the Public Safety Center as well.
Do they got it worked out?
Correct, yes.
All right.
Anybody got anything else?
I just said, use it for what they needed to make it functional for them, because I think, like you said, I think it's important to make that place functional for them.
Absolutely.
So we do have consent?
Consent. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item was a request from Veteran Services to apply for the NC DMVA Grant Program for County Veteran Offices. And Ms. Brittany Snyder is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good evening. Aridale County VSO respectfully requests $20,000 in funding through the NC DMV Grant Program for Veteran, County Veteran Offices to enhance our satellite, our Mooresville Satellite Office. This funding will directly support our mission to provide accessible, respectable, and veteran-centered services by providing physical environment, expanding outreach capabilities, and increase in our capacity to serve veterans through additional workspaces for staff. The Mooresville Office serves a growing population of veterans, many whom face barriers to care, including transportation limitations, mental health challenges, and difficulty navigating the complex benefit systems. This grant allows us to address the needs through targeted investments in office furnishings, outreach materials, historic recognitions, and infrastructure that expands our abilities to deliver timely in-person support.
Do you have the money in your budget to do that, whether you get this or not?
With the $20,000, I've priced out cubicles. If we just get the two, we're roughly under half of the grant. And then, with the remaining $10,000, if we do receive it, we're able to minimize, if, if needed, with either, because I wanted to do like a Flags of All Eras to represent different wars. So if needed, we can compromise, basically.
My point is, I'd like for us to approve it, whether she gets the grant or not. I think all of that's important, if y'all think that's necessary. I'd like for her to be able to go ahead with it. If we have to come up with a 20, we'll come up with it, or if she gets the grant, she can use the grant. Does that hinder her anyway, if we just said we'll cover it, so she can go ahead and get started? Can the grant reimburse us if she gets it?
I don't think the grant can be a reimbursable grant.
But you could use that for, just have to wait and see. When will you know about the grant? Just come back if you don't. Let us know.
She'll know by the end of October, right?
Yes, October 24th.
Just let us know if you don't get it.
Absolutely.
And this is mainly for Mooresville. Are we moving offices in Mooresville, or are we dividing up the large, what used to be a conference room for the cubicles?
So for the office, or for the conference table, our veterans often share deeply personal and sensitive information about their health, finances, and trauma. Without the privacy in closed spaces, we risk compromising their confidentiality and comfort, and the cubicles allow us to serve them with dignity and discretion.
It's still the same space, but they're wanting to take the conference room table out and put cubicles in, instead of, because what they were doing is having one on one side of the table, one on the other.
Right.
Yeah, you were there, you know.
I understand. I'm trying to figure out how that, you know, I understand it's state money, but I'm trying to figure out how that, you still have the two offices. Are you planning, are you planning to take all three officers on every, every time?
Every Wednesday. We have our admin, who has his own individual office, where he has that capability to close the door if needed. But as soon as you walk into that conference room, everyone can hear everything, from the lobby to Stephen's office. So at least, we have that enhancement to have two certified VSOs going at one time to address more clientele. And Stephen could still handle all the phone calls and walk-ins and either schedule appointments with us, or at least notify them to wait.
Okay. Anybody got anything else?
Thank you.
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
The next item was a request from Finance for approval of Budget Amendment Number Nine, and to amend the Facilities Improvement Fund project ordinance to include funds needed for repairs and improvements to the Winston Avenue Center. Ms. Caroline Taylor is here to make this presentation to the board.
We have funds budgeted in CIP. We had budgeted in order to build a new facility. We were able to purchase one and save a lot of funds that way. So we are looking at a lot of, a lot of improvements to the building, Winston Avenue building, we would use the grant funds for ICATS. But a portion of the building would be not for ICATS, it would be for equipment or surplus, anything else, which we wouldn't be able to use the ICATS grants on. So we're looking at just moving a little bit of that money, $150,000, from CIP to facility improvement to go ahead and get started on projects like roofing, plumbing, a few repairs that need, go ahead and need to get started on, that we wouldn't be able to use the ICATS grant funds on. So our request is just to transfer the funds from CIP to the Facility Improvement Fund and to amend the ordinance for Facility Improvement Fund for $150,000.
Anything else for Caroline? Anybody got anything?
Commissioner, help is good.
Okay. Do we have consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Taylor also has the next item, and that's a request from Finance to amend and restate the opioid settlement funding resolution.
With our MOU with the state of North Carolina for the opioid settlement funds, we're required to approve a spending resolution detailing how we're going to spend those funds for the upcoming year. We have a resolution that was effect in July 1st of 2025. You all approved that, and then it goes to Core NC, which they review the spending resolution and let us know if they have any questions. Well, we, one thing we included in our resolution was an addiction awareness training that would be hosted by the Health Department staff. And they had questions on that, and ultimately deemed that that one would not be eligible under the Exhibit A, which is what we fall under for funds. So we are requesting to amend and restate our resolution, just pulling out that addiction awareness training. Part of this resolution amendment also authorizes Core NC to strike through that wording on prior year resolutions as well.
Hoops and hurdles to have to jump through. It's crazy.
Yeah. Lot of work.
Anybody got anything for Caroline? Do we have consent?
Thank you.
You always stirring up trouble.
And then the final item on administrative matters is a request from Administration to approve the minutes from the September 16th, 2025 Board of Commissioner meeting.
Scotty, did you read all those, and are you okay with them? Everybody good? Okay. Do we have?
One dot that would need to be put in it.
Gotcha.
Or is it that?
Do we have consent?
Consent.
Okay, that's all our consent administrative. Brings us down to the announcement of vacancies occurring on boards of commissions, and I'm pretty sure you want to hit them at the four and the six.
If you don't mind, yes. I appreciate that. So we do have a few additions, so I'm going to go through those. We do have six appointments on the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, one appointment on the Animal Grievance Committee, four appointments on Board of Health, three appointments on Centralina Aging Advisory Committee, Region F, one appointment on Mooresville Board of Adjustment, which is an ETJ member, six appointments on the Nursing Home Advisory Committee, one alternate position on the Trauma Planning Board, which is also an ETJ member, and then one appointment on Jury Commission.
And I would like to stress to the folks that want to talk about growth and everything else, there's opportunity for people to get on these and be a voice. So it's very, very important. So if you're listening or watching something, and you know somebody that lives in these areas, please, please keep us in mind and have these people apply.
Will you let us know, John, how many of these? I know the Health Board... Will you let us know, John, how many of these, I know the Health Board, those people cannot reserve, they're term limited, and any of these others, do you have people that are serving that are willing to reserve? Do you know that yet?
There's only one that cannot.
Oh, one that cannot, okay, two can.
Three can, one cannot. There's four appointments.
Oh, okay. I only saw three right here.
You have updated on this?
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, it's the, I read from the updated list.
My bad, okay, my bad.
We have four for Park and Rakes coming up, would that not be on, is that B, F what? Oh, it was?
Yep.
Three. Okay.
Let us know about a week out from our next meeting what you have open, so we can try to help recruit if you.
I will say, yeah, jury is an important one. And if you remember, you had just done an appointment not too far back. That individual has relocated out of state, and they really need that appointment. So, if anybody knows anyone that's interested in serving on the Jury Commission, they need that one.
So, check out the website to learn more details and responsibilities of that role. It's listed on the website describing that opportunity.
Yes. And I will say this, and Chair Conley put it very accurately in the fact that, you know, we have a lot of concerns and people that talk about growth and not having a voice, not having a say. We have two ETJ members, one for Mooresville Board of Adjustment and one for Troutman Planning Board, and these have been open for some time, and we have not had any applicants. So, if anybody has a question, if they are actually in that ETJ, call us, and, you know, we will certainly pull up the map. You can pull it up on our GIS and click on the ETJ layer to see if you reside in that ETJ. But these are two appointments that have been open for a while, and we had the State Pool that was open for a while, and just, until just recently, we were able to make that appointment.
But what we've got to do is make sure if we don't get applicants from within the ETJ within a certain amount of time, if we need to update our policy, then we can appoint anybody in the county, right?
It's actually not a policy.
I know, I'm just saying, is it the law? Or, I'm just saying, we can appoint anybody to those positions if there's nobody that lives within the ETJ that applies, correct?
There's two controlling factors. One is your ordinance and what your ordinance says, and then there's the statutes. The ordinance only applies for appointing your ETJ members. I don't think it covers appointing for the others. And then the statutes, so, yes, if you don't have them, you can, but I think it's been my suggestion in the past that you get some input from those municipalities, and if they're not providing anybody, then yes.
But in the past, part of the problem was they're putting people on there that agree with them, and it's supposed to look out for the county people.
But I'm speaking of at least getting applicants from them. I mean, they should be soliciting applicants just as well.
Well, some of them don't own our people on there, because then they don't have to have that vote against what they're doing, is my point. I mean, I'm just saying, if we need to mirror our ordinance to the statute, if that helps us.
The ordinance applies to the ones that you appoint for your board.
Not for the municipalities.
Okay, I got you. But I'm just saying if we...
What I was saying is, I'm not telling you that you have to appoint whoever they send to you, because hopefully, they send you more than one.
Right.
But I guess my point is that the municipalities should be taking an active role in soliciting their own citizens as well, and soliciting people to participate.
But I think if John sends them a notice adequately that we're asking them to do that, and they don't, then if we get interested people that would serve otherwise, and we can legally appoint them, I think we should.
Yes, I mean, ideally, you have somebody who meets...
The best point, they're important positions.
Ideally, you have somebody who meets the criteria, though, first.
I know, I agree with you. I agree with that.
I'm thinking it would be helpful, as we brought this up, to have a visual when you're doing the announcements. Would it be possible to have a map on the screen to show where the ETJs are?
That's a great idea. I can ask Darcy to work up something that shows the ETJ for Mooresville, and it shows the ETJ and advertises what you have, and then shows the ETJ for Troutman. We could do that.
A visual would help with that as well.
She could, we could, you know, put that out to the community saying, we are looking for applicants willing to serve in these areas.
Because some folks don't even realize they're in the ETJ.
Right. That's a great idea, we can do that. And that's something that Darcy can work on and help us with.
Brings us down to appointments to Boards of Commissions, and I think we have one tonight. Do you want to hit that one?
Yes, sir, I can, absolutely. So, we do have one appointment for Centralina Economic Development District, and Rodney Harris, who is our Deputy County Manager, he has served in the past, and he is willing to serve again. So, thank you for your, for being willing to do that.
Anybody have any unfinished business for the four o'clock hour? Public comment period is the second meeting of the month, which will be October the 21st at 6:00 here in this room. Any Commissioner updates for the four o'clock? Any new business? County Manager's report, you got anything for the four?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Brings us down to closed session. We do have a closed session item, economic development in accordance to Norcolan General Statute 143, 318, 11A4. And do we have a motion to enter into closed session after a five-minute recess?
So moved.
By Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We will go into closed session after a five-minute recess.
So.